... I have somebody retelling everything that I took out of the other quarters. Get all that data we can have like that fucking point on.
Well, no. I'm trying to argue that you're not one of the two in such a way. And then we actually still need some different things. I'm really much different. I'm sharing that as a thing without consulting, you know what I mean? Consulting that there are. We did not plan something like this. It was just like the everybody's choice. So it's just starting to express themselves. So it's just somebody.
I'm thinking this is like I'm like this. It's like it's like mad and all these. Yeah, just because they're in the chair. I mean, I was thinking, I'm sorry, so we'll take a point or something last word. And then yeah, so yeah, I mean, we take a pick and roll. I mean, China is still like with the damage. So I don't trust people in my person. They don't know. And then the video, it makes like. I would tell them that they should just don't use. I support the. I'm not.
Those were some of the ones that has. September.
It's like this.
It does. It's essentially another side. It's like, yeah, yeah. September. Yes. I agree. She wanted his parents back. Or he's. This is the Mexican where she. It's like this by strauss, the virus in the south. We want to get action. Just don't push the seats.
Yes, I said.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
If there are.
So like, I know you guys are not.
Just say, well, because I can do those ten minutes so that it's. Like I'm easy way to be.
That one's of course. Maybe one of the.
I think it's. It's a big difference to those are black. That's right. Six dresses. And I just think it's.
We can even go to that. On you.
So back in. With the streaming people and for the URL and I think ready to. So it's a lot.
Well, it could even. President would say, okay, now we're back just to make sure that we're like it was sound. And sometimes there was a dedicated video.
Right.
It's either they will do that.
No, he's not. Oh, you're good.
So it's everyone just wants to go. It's not just your turn. I mean, we can change.
I mean, I'm sure. Yeah, I've seen like. Yeah, but yeah, and I. Yeah.
So then what would happen is the video, it would just seem as though they would just edit it so that it's student figure. Right? And then a second layer would come back again. So now we're going to first. And then the lives.
Things are.
That one is it just that. Is it that or eight percent right? And it was.
We're down like that.
And then it would.
It just.
The period.
Yeah, I find it. I mean, it's a couple of years. But then they're already by you understand like.
Like I can.
Of things decided.
And then I.
Make it or. About thirty five. I got one branding. Excuse me. Even that. That's a whole.
I can get the same.
If there's a, yeah.
Wheels.
It's a good progress.
He then leads to this. I mean, you got it's not on track. Yeah, it's not.
Robin, you're up. Do you want to come up front?
Three options or no?
Yeah, why not? Nick doesn't need a chair. No.
Who's Mr. Swanger?
Yeah, the.
Very good.
Morning. So myself, Robin Bruno, Melissa Howard from the fiscal officer, Julie Paris, my children's services administrator are here today because every January the state gives us an amount that they say is the county's local allocation that they should be providing towards child welfare that help us offset the cost of placement. They calculated using an average of the last three years. Our amount did come down and I had sent that to your office back in, I believe, February stating although the amount went down, my expenses continue to go up. So I was saying, if you'd be so generous and you would go ahead and give me what you gave me last year, which is the seven hundred thousand, then our agency would definitely continue to use that force placement of children. So what I'm providing for you in the first sheet is our costs for state fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, and so far what we paid for state fiscal year twenty five. So those dates be in July one to June thirtieth. In state fiscal year twenty three, you see that our total placement costs were just over a million. Then in twenty four, it was almost one and a half million. So far in twenty five, we're at seven hundred five thousand, which I asked Melissa to project if we continued at the the cost of kids that we have now, what would the entire fiscal year look like? So it's that that last row, one and a half million. The fourth column is what we received back in federal reimbursement. So there's a process for each youth that comes into care to determine whether or not we that youth qualifies for federal reimbursement. Unfortunately, you can see in our third column, our cost for kids continues to go up, but our percentage of reimbursement from the federal government has been continuing to go down. So much so that my narrative, I've said placement costs increased by thirty six percent from state fiscal year to twenty three to twenty four, while the reimbursement rate dropped eighteen point eight three percent during that same time. If we continue. The the final column is what Madison County Partner John Family Services has to pay for kids in care once the federal matches is used. So that's what's the balance that's left that we use from local money. So seeing those rates, I was in that category of saying, if you want to go ahead and give me that seven hundred thousand, we will definitely find use for it because every year we we will spend more than that actually in cost of care. Also calculated that the average cost of per diem, daily per diem in fiscal year twenty three was a hundred and thirty two dollars sixty six a day. In twenty four, that went to one seventy eight sixty nine. And so far year to date, that goes, it's gone up to two hundred and seventy two seventy eight a day. So that's you see an increase from from twenty three to twenty four of thirty five percent. And at this point, we're looking at a fifty three percent increase of that daily per diem rate and hundred and five percent more than what it was in twenty thirty. And the last three bullets have to do with our January invoice. So our total cost for January was a hundred and three thousand, and that was just for eleven years. Our number of kids that were taken into custody is less. We, when I was the head of children's services for twenty some years, we averaged twenty, twenty one kids. One month it was down to nine and I was nervous, like, how did that happen? But it usually is in the twenties. We're at in January, we were down to just eleven kids in paid placement, but five of those kids account for eighty three point four percent of our placement costs. And that last bullet is how much per day those five high in kids are costing us. Five hundred dollars a day, three hundred and thirty two dollars a day, nine hundred dollars a day, four hundred and twenty five dollars a day, and six hundred and thirty two a day.
So we had this conversation like maybe a month ago. I think I talked to you, Tony, about it on the phone a couple of times. And I asked Robin to come in to give a better explanation than what I could. So that's what they're basically here for today.
I brought them in case you go deeper on math and I brought her in case you go deeper on kids, so.
Yeah, essentially your contribution, required contribution decreases.
Yeah, it decreased by thirty one thousand two hundred and fifty, the amount that the state says the commissioners should be giving us this year. Full disclosure, it decreased last year too. And, you know, I believe that what is it, the closed map that doesn't get fed? So last year, when I sent you the letter, I also said, here's what my costs are. Your amount went down by about twenty, thirty grand. But if you're willing to give me, it was the seven hundred thousand last year, we will use it for placement. I know that that's the amount we entered in our budget for children because the instructions we were given was given were to keep our budget numbers at the same. So we did put seven hundred thousand as anticipated from the commissioners for this year based on that's what you gave us last year. So that's what my ask was.
So what happens when you exceed the seven hundred thousand?
So we do use a number of different funds that that we have, local, state, federal. So we we go for all options and we use local typically last. So there can be other funds that that we turn to, but but I will tell you that we couldn't do it without the the local funds. In terms of what we do when we hit that.
What does what does that mean? We couldn't do it? I mean, would the kids turned away? Is that that's what I'm asking.
I'd be coming here asking you for more money probably at that point if. I mean, the reality of it is, if we end up having, continue to have kids that are beyond our fiscal amount, then it's a conversation of having a. There is a juvenile court piece of this too. These high end kids, four out of five of them, we got straight from the court. These are your kids and one of them has been kicked out of detention because he was too aggressive. That's why we're paying all of this money because he's come from juvenile court kids that are aggressive, violent, and so on and so forth. So continuing having conversations with the judge about other alternatives, but full disclosure, I guess if we can't make it, we would be coming to up to. Right now, we're able to do it. We we Julie is a master negotiator. You know, every private, all of these figures are private placement centers, residential center. They always start at a higher number. We almost never agreed to that higher number. Julie will negotiate. We we have a tool, we call it a level of care tool, that we do on each kid. And we say, this is the treatment level that they're at. Now, what that place charges us for like this place versus this place can be different, but we will still continue to negotiate. We do continue. Where they start to really hit us is they'll then say, well, this kid needs a one on one. We can't handle this kid in a normal population. So then they tack on a hundred dollars a day for a one on one. And again, that's where we have to do negotiations and we do unannounced visits so that we see, are we actually getting a one on one? Sometimes we aren't. When we aren't, we go back and say, wait a minute, you charged me for this. You're not giving it to me. You know, they've had two kids, one, that type of a thing.
Options are pretty limited.
Yeah, I mean, as you know from before, we have had to have a kid sleep in our agency for a holiday weekend because we had no. At least actually, see the five hundred dollars a day?
Yeah.
A five hundred dollar list down there because he is, he went to detention. He is the one that went to JDC, then went to DYS, and then DYS kicked him out because of aggression. He is now back in our physical care and we have him placed in a residential center currently at five hundred dollars a day.
And what does that standard do for that kid?
None of them do enough. I'm not gonna, I mean, if we're going to discuss the the quality and the the licensing and the process, I I'm not the advocate for them. I'm not because
me.
we're not happy with what we get for the amount of money that we spend.
Well, that's that's where I'm at. I mean, the the goal should be to get that kid into some hell and get him out.
Is it a global option? Would you be interested in adopting a teenage boy?
I would. I would.
Okay.
Yeah, she brought the.
Julie, you wanna talk to?
As I mentioned earlier, the the options for facilities is pretty limited to shop around for a better provider.
I do.
You only have a hand, like, how many?
And we usually, yes, a lot of these ones are actually new, these high dollar ones, because we usually get the same three or four and they're kids, they're group homes. Kids go, they run the streets, they get in trouble, then we have to find a new placement. But I will say with the kid at five hundred dollars a day and the girl at nine hundred dollars a day, and actually, all of these high dollar kids right now are in actual residentials, which is new because we have been having to use group homes and they are in counseling, they are having med management. And we've seen the kiddo at five hundred dollars a day that was just at DYS. He came out and he has done well for the first time. We've had him in our care for thirty nine months. And this is the first time in thirty nine months. And all the time that he was at DYS, it was not in our care and he spent nine months there. So add that on to that amount of time. But he is getting counseling services, med management. We're actually starting some communication with his biological mom. We've terminated rights with biological mom, but his current therapist thinks it's best that he has at least some of that contact. He's seventeen year, going to be seventeen years old. So we're we're starting that for him and trying and it's knock on wood going well right now.
And at eighteen.
He will leave.
Good.
Yeah.
Basically.
Yeah, I mean.
You know where the.
This is a Madison County problem. This is the state of Ohio problem. And and the state is working on trying to license more residential set because as the group homes are typically the answers that were given for these kids. The foster parent doesn't want them in their home and residential doesn't have beds. So these group homes take them and charge us these very high rates.
And sometimes we're stuck.
The state is where and is working on trying to license more residential, which could be why Julie's saying there's, these are all five new ones to us.
And I think sometimes we get stuck with what we're given. So I get a kid at two o'clock from the court or because we had to call and ask for custody. You know, I'm asking for a placement. I never take the forced placement. I tell our consultant, keep looking, keep looking, because I want to be able to compare. We have some that were like, we will not place there, but then there's others that it's like, okay. So I will look at price, I will look at quality. And my workers sometimes don't like it because they are there till nine, ten o'clock with a kid because I don't want to take what I've been given. But we also continue to look. So we had one kiddo, he was placed at five hundred and twenty five dollars a day. And I wasn't happy with that, but it was ten o'clock at night, so we took it. And the next day we found something for a hundred and twenty five dollars a night. So even though we will get a ding for the state, you'll see that we're out of compliance because we have a kid moving. That's best for him. It's best that he's not in a group home. He's eight years old, so we were able to step him down that next day at a hundred and twenty five dollars a day. So I will take that criticism from the state, one, to save money, but two, because it's best for kids to be in a home life setting.
On those five kids, how long? You said thirty nine months for the one?
So one of them is eighteen months. So when I did this, I was shocked and actually told Robin, every one of these kids right now that are our high ticket kids were not removed from biological parents. They were kids that had either been shuffled around or kids that were with relatives long term because of parents overdosing or different things. So but all of them, there was one at eighteen months, one at ten months. However, we also had that kid in care for a year prior that's not included in that ten months because she went with a relative. Thirty nine months. Then we have another girl that's been ten months that she's been in foster care twice before. And we get her to where we think we can get her home to grandma. Grandma doesn't follow through and she comes back. So and then the last kiddo was fifteen months, but we also had him a year before when we reunified.
I mean, the goal isn't to keep them there till they're eighteen.
No, the goal is that they will hit every one of actually these programs, not the group homes that cost a lot of money, but residentials have a step program that, you know, or a phase, they call it different things. Like basically, you want to reach the top phase. Some are four, some are five. And once they reach each phase, then we're looking for foster homes. Unfortunately, I will say there's two of our kids, both our five hundred dollar kid and our nine hundred dollar kid. They've committed such crimes that I'm, just to be honest, I probably will not find a foster home to take them, even when they complete these programs. And the five hundred dollar a day kid, he's in our permanent custody, so we will have until he's eighteen.
So there's different different levels of care.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to.
And services.
I mean, these group homes, what, is the home, a private home or?
A lot of them are in Dayton and it is, it's a some of your old rundown homes that they fixed up that have multiple bedrooms and they're stacked twenty four hours.
Private agencies will purchase these homes and get them licensed as a group home through the state and.
There's just a place to keep them.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
I mean, the kids are supposed to attend school and they're supposed to go therapy, but as to Julie's point, they opted AWOL.
So you're you're fighting a very losing battle.
Yes, but you know, I was saying, we brought you our high end kids. Julie also looked, you know, I said that we've got eleven kids in care. The other six are all little short kids.
Yeah, three months, three months, one month, one month. But I also want to point out, we have seven kids right now with relatives and that's new for Madison County. So we only have eleven kids on that piece of paper, but there's seven more we have custody of that we have found relatives, which is a free placement for us because the state picks up to pay them. Because we're doing that digging and my staff are doing home studies and trying to do those things versus keeping them in foster care.
And that's why I said there's different levels of care. So not all of them are the five hundred, nine hundred dollars a day. There are success stories here, just what we're talking.
We don't need the money for success stories.
Yeah.
The money for the the kids that are family.
And I will say, we always, even if they end up in the highest level of care, our goal is to always reunify with parents or relatives unless we have permanent custody. But even if they're in residential care, our goal is always to step them down. We want them in a foster home or with relatives. And I think we do a good job of that for most of our kids. Some of these kids, like I said before, are going to be kids that because of their criminal history. I mean, both of the two have felonies in the juvenile court. And so it's hard to find a foster parent that says, hey, I want to take them. Now hopefully, they've completed this treatment and we can find someone. That is our goal. And I'm always looking, a kid that's in a group home, I don't ever have our consultant quit looking because I don't want, I don't want any kid in a group home if I don't have to. I'd rather pay residential if they can get the service or have them in a foster home.
Other question about the projections for the end of the year, for the rest of the year. So seven hundred and five thousand was the placement cost through January. So that's seven months, so about a hundred thousand a month. Why do you project eight hundred thousand in the final five months?
So what I did was, we're kind of in an unusual year for us with a number of kids. And I went back the past couple of years, like last year, we had twenty four, twenty six kids. And that could happen at any moment. Plus, towards the end of the school year, we had a lot of referrals and we have that potential. So I wanted to, I didn't want to base this on the anomaly of the low kids that we have now. So I went on actual historical data and pulled that, but then also made sure that these youth that we have with the higher rates, that we're accounting for them and that figure as well through the revenue of the year.
Okay, so it's been an anomaly for the first seven months.
For having, having like the ten to eleven kids.
Okay, so you're basing the last five months of projection on correcting for the anomaly rather than, it's not as if January through June or higher months on average is.
Melissa's point about the end of the school year, sorry, but schools make referrals at the end of the school year on that kid that they've worried about all year long, but they didn't call us.
Yeah.
Come May, they call us because they're now thinking of that kid being home alone over the summer with, in the care of their parent or relative. So yes, the beginning of the school year, the end of the school year are also high times.
But that even.
So she accounted, I mean, but the end of the school year is higher than the the rest of the year. So that's, if this being June to January was this seven hundred thousand, January to July is going to include, she increased it a little to include for that potential increase based on what the last three, you said three years.
Yeah.
Right, but because that would be a, it's a hundred thousand a month because it was the first seven months that you have the numbers for. So that'd be a hundred and sixty thousand a month.
Which is an average of what we were having in the private, because we had some that were supposed to two hundred thousand.
At the beginning of the year for the end of the school year. Okay, well, thanks for elaborating.
Oh, you're just one.
Any other questions?
Questions, guns? So do you maintain the greed or the budgeted amount of contribution from the county general fund to the program or do you withdraw thirty one thousand?
We said. We can maintain.
We said people plot and they kept applying, that's what we said.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, though, appreciate it. Appreciate it. Dennis, Michelle is yours.
Good morning, everyone.
All right, so today presenting the case, PZ twenty four zero five, Chris Barrett, who cares of Ohio Premier Soccer is requesting rezoning challenge for the parcel located at eighty eight thirty, which is the house USA, I'm sorry, eighty eight thirty US forty two, Plain City, Ohio. The rezon currently is R one, the rezon to a C two and combined to the already parcel, which is eighty eight twenty US forty two, Plain City, Ohio, to one parcel. So they all will both be C two. This is only for the rezoning section of it. Later on, they will be coming back for doing a preliminary plan, which has all their site plan, the big landscape and everything in it. They're also going through the building permit, so that's what they can be doing during that time. So that's why they come in as preliminary plan, showing all the stuff that's going to happen, what it's really going to look like. I know regional, I have given them the concept plan of what they believe that it's going to be. So now we're going to actually finalize it with the preliminary plan. So that's why they're going to have to go through the subdivision review board. They're going through the building permit for anything done like electrical, anything, the whole architectural part of it, that's what they be dealing with. And then if we can, we may have regional for then they're the whole public be aware of what's going on and that will be it. So so right now, you know, that's all they're doing is just rezoning. And then when they come back for the subdivision review board, then that's when they have the meats and potatoes of what exactly is going to happen. They have a better idea of what's going to happen, have more, more, more answers than questions. So they will probably have, you know, if if they need them to do a track study or whatever they do, if they already have it at that time, you know, how it was really going to look. I mean, we have, like I said, we have concept plans, but you know, now they're going to finalize.
If we rezon it now and and we don't like the way it looks later.
Well, yeah, the subdivision review board will pretty much hash it until they get better, just like with the building permit. If there's something's wrong with it, they will have to fix it before we can permit. So that's why they have to go through the subdivision review board, that regional will hear it and that will be the public, public. We actually will hear it. So nobody came out of any other meeting before, nobody expressed to me in the office that they're against it. Like I said, it's Ohio Premier Soccer, so.
But what meetings have you had? So it hasn't been before any boards? And and is it typical that it would come directly to us for rezoning?
Well, no, actually, it already went through all the boards.
It did.
It went through all, it went through all of us. So it went through, already went through subdivision review board, it went to regional, it went to rural, and when now it's come to you guys for rezoning. But because you guys are really not the technical people of it, when it comes to architectural symbol, it goes through subdivision and then the regional. Of course, me and bill people. That's that's the technical.
Gotcha.
So.
So most, most townships, counties, municipalities have like a two step process. You know, you have to go through the rezoning process. Once you go through the rezoning process, then you go through the more technical subdivision review. Yeah, I know that because I help clients with that. It's usually a two step process. I help get a client property rezoned, then you have to go through subdivision review, submit, you know, detailed engineering, traffic studies, that's when all of that takes place.
Right, sure.
It's a two step process and you usually have to go through all the boards twice to do to do that.
Yeah, and and with that, like I said, if this rezoning doesn't get approved, there's no reason to go forward with anything else until, you know, they get that satisfied, so.
Sure, yeah, you don't want them incurring a bunch of costs for engineering and their plans and all of this if they don't get the property rezoned. It would be a great expense if you don't have the property.
We've experienced that in the past where the car got put in front of the horse. So we definitely make people well aware to go through the problem.
About that's why they engage engineers and architects before they know they could do what they want with the property in terms of something.
Right, correct. And they've been a great job signing with building permits and building department has really been handling with a bunch of stuff. Lot of regulations and so, I mean, they're, it's already in the process with the building permit. So they are already looking at stuff and how it's going to be built, electrical wise, so like that. So now when they come through the subdivision review board and regional, we get the technical of how it's going to look, the layout of, you know, stuff like that.
It's still clear.
Crystal clear. So it won't be, you know, having issues with being kind of grainy.
Yeah, so, yeah, I just had misinterpreted what you said about the the order of the boards, but just for the record, it does say in our resolution that Madison County's only commission has reviewed and recommended. So I just want to, for the record, it does state that.
I moved. You moved?
I'll second.
We were first and a second, any discussion? I heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Doctors Nathan, Bruce, Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Absolutely, guys, appreciate all. Thank you, Dennis, appreciate all your work.
Thank you, Chris, yes, thanks for being here.
I would, but I understand that, that it has gone.
Maybe, if you would, please.
Resolution, make that payment of invoices for the Madison County audit.
So moved, second. First and second, any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Doctors Nathan?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution approving a lease agreement between the Board of Madison County Commissioners and Rachel M. Jones, Deputy Registar Agency four nine oh one for the Madison County Bureau of Motor Vehicles.
I moved. Second.
We worked out the parking?
We did.
What was the resolution of the parking issue?
They can park there from four to close on Saturdays.
That's parking. The tenant acknowledges that the following provision is a material term of this lease, tenants and and its affiliates shall not park in any manner that obstructs access to the garage at or rear of the building as this area must remain clear for the maintenance purposes. Any vehicle found in violation of this material term shall be subject to towing at this owner's expense. Is that what you wanted to say?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. The language regarding the material term, that means if there's a breach, it's a basis for termination of the lease, so that was that.
I had a final conversation with her yesterday, so we're
Okay.
We're good to go, four to five thirty, they can park there, cause maintenance isn't working. Saturday, eight to twelve thirty, I think, whenever they're operating.
Very good, we were first and a second, any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Doctor Sneakers?
Yeah.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution approving a contract between the Madison County Board of Commissioners and Choice One Engineering for Engineering Services for Madison County's twenty twenty four CDBG program.
So moved, second.
First and a second, any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Doctor Sneakers?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Resolution approving the notice to contractors for the Madison County Village and Plain City ADA Improvement Project.
Need to approve, second.
We're first and a second, any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shea?
Yeah.
Doctors Nathan?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution approving the tax incentive review council recommendation for Condas T E P Van Buren Hagg parcel ID oh eight oh oh four two nine dot zero zero zero.
We're waiting till next week.
Um no, that, that question was answered.
Or guess, okay.
We'll go through, second.
We're first and a second, any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Doctor Sneakers?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution approving the tax incentive review council recommendation for Jefferson Industries Corporation, parcel ID one zero dash zero one nine 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 dot zero 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 for the twenty twenty four tax year.
Shouldn't approve.
Second. In first and a second, any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Doctor Sneakers?
Yeah.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution approving the increasing appropriations for the Board of Elections related to a refund from election systems and software.
Approved, second.
We're first and a second, any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Doctor Sneakers?
Yeah.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution approving a transfer of funds and an increase of appropriations for the Madison County Board of Elections to better attract grant funding.
I moved, second.
First and a second, any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Doctor Sneakers?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution approving a transfer of funds and an increase of appropriations for the Madison County Board of Elections.
So moved, second.
We're first and a second, any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Doctor Sneakers?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
And lastly, a resolution approving a transfer of funds for the Madison County Family Council.
So moved, second.
First and a second, any other discussion? Here, uh roll call please.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Doctor Sneakers?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Alright, moving into public comment, open session. Any comments, questions, any worries? Updates, concerns?
There's some more.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um so we were wondering if the county would be willing to kind of be proactive by passing an amendment to the county's ordinance rules to prohibit any outside waste from being processed and stored in Madison County?
Legal question. Not really sure which are, what the question is.
So that would prevent outside waste from being trucked in to the county?
Is, you, you said, we were asking, is this related to the proposed biodigester? The reason I the, the only reason I asked that is because um the proposed suggestion wouldn't apply there. The, the, if the county were to pass a zoning um amendment implementing what you're proposing, it wouldn't apply to that facility if they're deemed a public utility. There are current zoning regulations in place that would keep this kind of facility from being built at the proposed location but for the fact they may be classified as.
Okay, so you're saying that if they're not a public utility, then we wouldn't need any of that?
Correct.
Did that also prevent the landfill from being started?
Uh there are specific statutory provisions regarding the landfill.
Okay.
That, there's not similar provisions within the R C for biodigesters, there are for landfills.
Okay, because I know someone had told me, I think it was back in the maybe early nineties, they were trying to start a landfill off of Big Bend Circle though, there was some interest.
Yeah, then there are very clear statutory regulations for solid waste. Like the idea that.
Yeah, yeah.
Always helps to be creative, a lot of options.
And what was your name for the record, I'm sorry.
Tracy Everby.
But anyone else?
Um I do have one, Jamie, they call that more, I need him, obviously, EPA have, EPA has sent requirements to Vanguard what they need from them to move forward with their application process. And they are requesting a class two wastewater operator for that facility, which I find really interesting for an on-farm operation. So um that concerned me, what kind of waste are they proposing to put into a digester? That EPA is requiring Vanguard to hire a class two wastewater operator. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention that that is something EPA is requiring to me that it is more industrial or something you would see at a wastewater facility. So I just, I was interested in that, that they're requiring Vanguard to have that.
Which is long-term, that's a, that's a good thing that they're asking for that, right?
It is, but it's that I.
Well, I, I did, I, I understand your point, but ultimately, that's it.
And it's gonna make it difficult for them, but if my Chinese class two operator doesn't have to be there all the time, I think there are minimum requirements like one of those.
Yeah, cause that's what they need for the sewage plant. But it depends on the size of the plant, yeah, and how many gallons per day it's certified.
I guess my comment was, it's better that they have that than nothing at all.
Yeah, I mean, if they have a uh a licensed operator, they'll have to report.
Right.
So, you know, if there are, if there is anything they discharge that there's some key requirements, the upper limits, the lower limits.
Your, your point is probably that, this just demonstrates how non-ag it is, right? That's, that's the point.
That's about what I'm saying. Restrictions would not apply to that, right? Yeah, exactly, so that, that's one of them I was referring to, the restrictions, although this is a, you know, it doesn't matter. Some investigations, yes. There's uh public safety risk and environmental risk, they're typically brought on to those things. So therefore, I'd be more concerned about what we're putting in there.
Sure, the bi- just made the byproduct, it's classified, I believe it's a biosol, so that's another likely reason for their operation.
But isn't typical is my question, do these dairy farms require it?
No, no idea. No, I don't, I don't know of any dairy farm that requires that.
Yeah.
When it's time for them to spread, they suck it out of the lagoon and they spread it.
Just the level of what they're proposing, where across from that, goes beyond minor and.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Going once? Looking twice?
Right, thank you all.
Thank you, adjourned.